I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order on this November 18th of 2024. Please stand for the invocation and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The following is an excerpt from a prayer by Reverend J. McMillan, given on this, on the 4th of July of 1848 in consecration of the Washington Monument. "Direct us, O Lord, in all our doings with the most gracious favor, and further us with thy continued help, why we acknowledge thee to be the Lord our God and offer thee the services of our lips. May our hearts be devoted to thee, that we may bring forth the fruits of holiness in our lives, and show by our deed that we are faithful servants. Be pleased to perpetuate our free government and continue its blessings to mankind. In your most holy and gracious name, amen."
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome everybody this evening. I do have two changes to the agenda that I wish to bring to your attention. We're going to move public hearing to item number four. And that is the public hearing on zoning map amendment, a rezoning request. And then we're going to move public comments to item number five. The reason we're doing that is because the planning board does have to convene separate after this meeting. We don't want to delay them with additional comments. Any other changes to the agenda? Any other items?
Mr. Chair, can we, am I able to pull item 2E to new business, please?
Item 2E, from the consent agenda to new business?
Yes, sir.
Any other changes to the agenda or additional agenda items? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh-oh, I lost her in the crowd. Is Gina here? Hi Gina, would you please come up to the podium? Gina De Serbo is a Lee County Youth, member of the Youth Council. And what school do you go to?
I go to Southernly High School.
And we're glad to have you here this evening. Are you going to take copious notes to share with your council?
Yes, I am.
Okay. You're now excused. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, do you mind for a minute? Ladies and gentlemen, we do have some seats that are available in the front, two rows. There's some over by our staff located on the right-hand side. There are some seats. As my pastor says, scoot in, make room, make a friend.
Are they all Southern Baptists? This is a proclamation honoring retiring Commissioner-at-Large Bill Carver. Whereas Commissioner Bill Carver was elected to the Lee County Board of Commissioners at Large on November 3rd of 2020. And whereas Commissioner Bill Carver is a retired naval commander, serving as a submariner, taught middle school math, was an adjunct faculty at Charleston Southern University, headmaster for two Christian schools, and continued his public service to the citizens of Lee County. And whereas Commissioner Bill Carver, during his term as Commissioner, served as a Christian missionary with four trips to Africa. And whereas Commissioner Bill Carver furthered his missionary work locally with the Life Springs Church by conducting Bible study at the Lee County Jail. And whereas Commissioner Bill Carver served on the Central Pines Council of Governments Board, the Board of Education Liaison, as an alternate on the Sanford Area Growth Alliance Executive Board, and on the Lee County Library Board of Trustees. And whereas Commissioner Bill Carver participated in the Lee County Young Commissioners 4-H Program, contributing his knowledge and talents to our rising young leaders. And whereas, it is the desire of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to recognize the achievements of Commissioner Bill Carver and to express to him our appreciation of his dedicated service and many contributions to Lee County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Lee that it congratulates Commissioner Bill Carver for a career in public service and a genuine interest in concerns for Lee County, and it wishes the, for Commissioner Carver, continued success in all his future endeavors, for both he and his family. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the meeting of the Board, and a copy be presented to Commissioner Bill Carver. Presented this 18th day of November 2024, signed by myself and attested to by Haley Hall, Clerk to the Board. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution? Motion's been made to approve the proclamation honoring retiring Commissioner-at-Large Bill Carver. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It's photo time.
Yes, and another. Cassandra is here. [laughing]. Hit the flag in the picture. Congratulations, Bill.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
This is such a privilege to serve, and then to maybe make a couple of quick comments before your busy meeting tonight. I kind of thought while the chairman was reading it that when you're as old as Commissioner Reeves and I, we're probably the only ones that could have as many wherases in the proclamation at retirement. As I reflect on the past four years, it's been a privilege to serve as Commissioner in Lee County, and I thank my wife Cricket for her love and support. Only one real reality stands out to me after four years, and I'd have to say that it has to do with the fact that God has surely blessed our county. We have an economic opportunity that's, that so eclipses so many other counties in the state. The potential for growth, the contribution to our tax base, which is important, obviously, for our budget. We have support for growing families. I think of all the effort that has been made for parks and recreation, caring teachers in the classroom, and the other thing at a different level is good jobs for parents who have to raise children, who need to have the money in spite of this inflation in order to make their families work. We have safe communities, thanks to our sheriff, his deputies, and even the Sanford Police Force. We have excellent available healthcare. And I think of even the Health Department, who helps so many people that otherwise probably would not have healthcare if those benefits weren't there. And we have hundreds, hundreds of people behind the scenes that makes this thing work. And I think, to be honest with you, when I became a Commissioner, I had no idea how much responsibility somebody like Lisa Minner has. It's a huge operation, and it makes us look good on a number of occasions as Commissioners. Now concerning the Board, the Commissioners receive excellent support from the county staff. They always have. Lisa is a most competent and capable leader. And I have to say that Haley and Jennifer before her, they're always pleasant and helpful in their roles. Always make my day when I go to see them. I know I'm leaving behind seven Commissioners. I don't know if Samantha is here tonight, but I know that Mark is out on a, on a well-deserved trip. But I know that you're well, more than well-equipped to take Lee County into 2025. And I have to say that our chairman has demonstrated tireless commitment and stamina as chairman that goes beyond statement, I think. I'm not sure that he doesn't have a chair with his name on it in the county manager's office, so he goes in there and sees her so many times. Anyway, finally, I think that the electric, the, our citizens have voted for bipartisan local government. They returned Cameron and Mark, and replaced me with Samantha. And so we have a combination of 4-3 with the intention, I think, in the back of their minds, that we can come together and improve things for everybody. I know that you all are committed to making that happen. Now, I think God has blessed me and our county in the last four years. And my last word of encouragement is for you to look to Him for His command, His continued provision, and even as the prayer said tonight, that we would have a clear conscience, that we could go ahead and do things under His hand and through His power. God bless Lee County. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't warrant those gratuitous comments, sir.
I don't know.
We thank you for what you've done. Okay, next item on the agenda is public hearings for zoning map amendment, rezoning requests. Amy McNeil is coming to the podium.
Good evening, Commissioners, Planning Board, and Staff and Citizens. This information is on pages 179 through 203 of the Commissioners' Agenda Packet, and on pages 5 through 27 of the Planning Board Agenda Packet. I will pause at this time to allow the Chairman to open the public hearing and pose the question regarding any disclosure or conflict of interest.
A governing board member shall not vote on any legislative decision regarding a development regulation adopted pursuant to Chapter 160D where the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on the member. A governing board member shall not vote on any zoning amendment if the landowner of the property, subject to a rezoning petition, or the applicant for a text amendment is a person with whom the member has a close familial, business, or other associational relationship. Does anybody, any, excuse me, does any board member have a conflict? Seeing none? I now open the public hearing on the zoning map amendment submitted. Thank you.
Mr. Jason Rivera has submitted a request to rezone a 4.9 acre portion of a 16.6 acre tract of land with frontage on White Hill Road, US Highway 15501, from highway commercial to residential agricultural. The map on the screen behind you and included in your agenda illustrates the site via aerial photography, so that you can familiarize yourself with the location, but I'm going to flip back so that you can have a more, it's a better map with regard to explaining what it is he's asking for. There we go. All right, so Mr. Rivera is asking to rezone from highway commercial to residential agricultural to match the existing RA zoning at the front of the parcel, to allow the subject property to be used in a residential manner. Therefore, this rezoning request has been submitted for your consideration. This is a standard general use rezoning request, as opposed to a conditional rezoning request. Therefore, no site plans or subdivision plans or building plans are required as part of this rezoning request. The site is in southwestern Lee County, within the White Hill community. It's on the north side of White Hill Road, between Faircloth Clock Shop and a house at 1218 White Hill Road, and another house at 1356 White Hill Road. The parcel is undeveloped and wooded. The highway commercial zoning district, which is the current zoning district, is established to accommodate uses that depend upon a large flow of traffic and convenient access, such as the retailing of durable goods, the provision of commercial services to industrial areas, and the provision of services to tourists. Examples of uses permitted by right within the HC zoning district include restaurants with or without drive-throughs, and convenience stores with or without gas sales. And there's a list of permitted uses for the existing zoning highway commercial included within your agenda packet. The proposed zoning is residential agricultural, and this district is established to provide areas for low-density, single-family uses, low-intensity agricultural operations, as well as agribusiness and supportive industrial and commercial uses. Examples of uses permitted by right within the RA zoning district include residential homes, churches, and parks operated on a non-commercial basis. Once again, there's a list of all the uses permitted in the RA zoning district included within the agenda packet for your reference. Now we're going to flip to the zoning map. There we go. The adjacent zoning to the north is residential agricultural. That's the green color, as you can see, is the majority of the zoning in that area. To the south, it's also residential agricultural. To the east is highway commercial and residential agricultural, and to the west is residential agricultural. There have been no rezonings in this area that have impacted the long-range land use plan. The adjacent land uses to the north, we have undeveloped and wooded land. To the south, we have a house in undeveloped and wooded land. To the east, we have undeveloped wooded land in Faircloth's Clock Shop and a house. And to the west, we have additional homes. The Plan San Lee Long Range Plan identifies this site as countryside, which intends to protect agricultural and undeveloped lands outside the urban service areas, preserves the county's agricultural heritage, conserves and maintains rural lifestyles, and is limited residential density. There's information from the land use plan included within your agenda packet. Per our GIS mapping system, there is public water in this area along White Hill Road, but no public sanitary sewer is available at this location. There is public road frontage on the overall 16 acre tract of land along White Hill Road, 351 feet of road frontage to be exact, but the area as to be rezoned is a portion to the rear of this. You'll see illustrated as the site on your screen. The property owner simply wants the rear of the property to match the RA zoning at the front of the property. If rezoned, all of the uses permitted in the RA zoning district would be allowed, and any future development of the subject property would be required to meet the current development standards of the UDO. The staff analysis, the Plan San Lee designation of countryside lists RA as the primary current zoning district, and residential and working lands as allowable uses. Therefore, this rezoning request appears to align with the plan. However, it's ultimately up to the Board of Commissioners to determine how the county should grow, and if they're comfortable with the proposed use and zoning and other possible future RA uses. Additional information presented at the public hearing should also be considered in the recommendation and the final decision regarding this requested zoning map amendment. This concludes my staff report. Are there any questions?
Questions for Amy. Commissioner Carver?
None.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Borbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No, thank you.
Okay. The public hearing is still open. Anyone in favor, please come to the podium. When you do, please state your name as well as your address. And let us know if you're in favor or opposed.
David Smoke, 96 Northridge Trail. I am in favor of this rezoning request. It is in alignment with the Plan San Lee. I'm just taking this opportunity to encourage you to review the Plan San Lee. There was one note in the, in the staff report that I read where there's an issue with the transportation for that main road that's in front of it. Once again, if we redo the Plan San Lee, that would also involve redoing the master plan for the transportation projects that we need to keep an eye on with the growth in this county. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone opposed? Anyone for rezoning? Anyone else opposed? Going once? Going twice? Public hearing is now closed. The Planning Board is now excused to go to their meeting room. Thank you very much for your service. We appreciate it. Please drive safely, wear your seatbelts, and no speeding. Next item on the agenda is public comments. And the first individual on here is April Stone. And again, please state your name as well as your address.
Chairman Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question? Given the amount of people that have showed up for this wonderful topic, is there any, can I make a motion to extend the three limit, or the three-minute limit speech per person to 10 minutes if they are, are in this topic of what has been listed?
Motion's been made to extend the three minutes on our limits for public comments. Any further discussion?
Extend it how much?
I would say 10 minutes per person.
How many people do we currently have?
I have one, two, three, four, five on school funding, and one on the county budget.
That's an hour.
Whoa. Mr. Smoke would only have three minutes, because his is on county budget.
Also, unless they sign off, if I could, I mean, if my son, that they were going to be back, then he should.
So you've been calibrated for three minutes?
So, I mean, it will probably have to be.
And I would say 10 minutes. I mean, I'm not timing it to it. I just, if they're in the middle of a thought, I would like them to be able to finish said thought before someone else coming up and stating their name, their address, and breaking the flow of the information that's being provided.
I don't want to force them into 10 minutes.
No, I agree with that. I don't think they want to talk for 10 minutes apiece either.
All right, motion's been made to waive our policy on three minutes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is April Stone, and I live at 727 Forestwood Park Road in Sanford. And if I may pass out these packets to each of you, if that's okay? In these packets is kind of what I'm going to go over tonight in my speech. And forgive me if I kind of get a little sidetracked, but I've been trying all, like for weeks, to get this together. So, good evening, County Commissioners. My name is April Stone. I am a homegrown Lee County resident, born and raised here. My grandparents, the Smiths, had a service station and restaurant in Deep River for years. My husband, Michael Stone, along with his father Phil Stone and brothers, own Phil Stone and Sons Tree Removal. And I have had a successful salon on Gulf Street for years. We've always been vested in our county and community. Now that you have a little bit of my background, I would like to get right to the matters at hand. I am a Lee County Schools employee at Lee County Senior High School. I work as an instructional assistant and a bus driver, which is considered to be a dual employment role. I am here on behalf of my fellow classified employees, which consist of positions such as instructional assistants, bus drivers, cafeteria staff, custodial staff, bus garage staff, office support staff, as well as many more positions that are paid hourly. I spoke last week at this Lee County School Board meeting, asking that the instructional assistants and bus drivers and other classified employees receive a pay increase. We also ask for a pay scale, which will, which we currently do not have in place. Therefore, a newly hired bus driver will be making the exact same amount as a veteran employee of 25 years would make. We do not get any more pay for experience or years of service. This is very disheartening, as you can imagine how it feels as dedicated, hard-working, loyal employees. We are not compensated for our dedication or experience. We ask that you implement a pay scale for years of service, so that we clearly know what we will be making each year. We know the school board had asked for an additional $5 million, in which you gave 2.3 million to the board. If the total amount had been granted, then a pay scale would have been set into motion, and I would not be here right now. Now for some questions that I would like for you to ponder. Budget prioritization. How is funding for classified staff prioritized in the county budget? What are some steps that are being taken to keep our salaries competitive? Economic impact. How would increasing wages for classified staff benefit the local economy? How can the county ensure that we can keep up with the rising cost of living? Staff retention and recruitment. How does the current pay structure support retention and recruitment? Are there plans to address wage gaps and reduce turnover? Value of work. How does the county quantify the essential roles classified staff play in student success? We can, can we expect future commitments to address this issue in the next budget? Facts that we do know. The cost of living has increased significantly, but our wages have not. Classified staff salaries are below neighboring districts or poverty levels. Classified staff are essential to daily operations. Bus drivers, custodians, and cafeteria workers, as well as instructional assistants, ensure schools function smoothly and get children to and from school. High turnover increases costs and disrupts operations. Pay raises improved retention. Every dollar paid to staff boosts local economy through our spending. Supporting classified staff directly impacts student success and school quality. When evaluating the funding allocated to our classified staff in Sanford, it is important to consider how we measure up to neighboring, neighboring counties. Surrounding counties such as Wake, Chatham, and Moore are providing funding for their school systems, particularly for classified staff, reflecting a more competitive and equitable approach. These counties have taken steps to ensure their employees are compensated fairly, offering pay scales that recognize critical roles that these staff members and supporting student success. Now the money. We completely understand the challenges you face when creating a budget for the county. We know that you believe you've already adequately funded the Lee County school system according to the email included in your packet that we received from Kirk Smith, stating all the general statutes that you're responsible for. As I drive around our county, I've noticed the parking lot at the police department is full of brand-new police cars, way more than the number of officers on shift at one time. I see the beautiful new fire department out on Cullen Road, which is supposed to be one of our first impressions of our county as drivers pass by. I see housing developments being built, left and right, bringing more revenue into our county. As enticing and beautiful as all these things portray our county to be, education is left on the back burner. With the 24 million, according to the general fund balance that I saw in November, there are funds that can be given out. The problem is priorities. I'm appalled by the examples of leadership that Lee County Commissioners, as well as Lee County Board of Education, have portrayed to myself, as well as our students and residents of this county. While you have been playing a blame game of whose responsibility it is to fund us, or whose pocketbook it will come out of, we are the ones suffering. I have included in your packets a copy of my last two paychecks. Yes, those paychecks include bus driver salary, as well as teacher assistant salary. How many of you would like, to give a show of hands, Commissioners, that if you would be able to live off this amount monthly? I'm not ashamed. $1,796. If I spend $271, like I did this past week, on groceries, four weeks a month, that's $1,084. That's not too much left to pay my bills or live off of. This This directly affects my family, often having to make a choice between paying the bills or getting groceries, much less having to tell my children we cannot afford to do something or get what they would like. We cannot afford to fall behind in this effort. When our funding lags, we ask, we risk losing qualified individuals to nearby districts that offer better opportunities, leaving our schools and students at a disadvantage. Ensuring competitive funding for our classified staff isn't just an investment in our employees, it's an investment in the success and future of Lee County Schools. We are asking you today for your support in increasing funding specifically to address pay increases for classified staff. This is not just about salaries. It's about retention, morale, and ensuring that our schools can continue to provide the level of service that our students deserve. Your investment in this area will send a clear message to our employees and the community that Lee County values its people and is committed to building a stronger, more competitive school system. Lastly, I would like to address last week's school board meeting. I was disgusted by Mr. Cameron Sharpe's temper tantrum about being called a clown on social media. Sir, I tell my students every day not to worry about what someone calls them and to be the bigger person and a good example. Maybe you should heed to that advice as well. While you all are whining about being called names, I am struggling to make ends meet and provide for my family. Each of you have a choice. Funding our school system is not a blame game, or it's not my responsibility. This is crucially impacting each of our lives and we would appreciate your prompt attention and support. In conclusion, I didn't have this on my sheet, but I would like to tell you. A lot of people say, well, why do you continue employment if you don't make any money? Why do you do this? I have two children. My oldest, Christopher Stone, is 18 years old. He was an EC student in Lee County Schools. He had dyslexia, visual motor coordination disorder, ADHD, as well as Asperger's. Through the CTE program at Lee County High School, my child was able to do an internship at Sanford Contractors his 11th grade year. Then they offered him a full-time position, so he graduated early in December and went to work full-time. My child makes more money than I do a week, which I am proud of him for. But if you ask why I am so vested in Lee County Schools and why I continue to work for the minimum wages that we get, it's because I want students to succeed like that. Not every child will go to college. My child can only read on a third grade level, but you give him some mortar and brick and he'll lay brick and pipe all day long. And I owe that to the CTE and EC program at Lee County High School. So I beg of you to please consider giving us more funding. I know that, you know, you have made a decision, but it's, it's so hard to decide whether, I mean, I, I do hair, work on the school bus, work on teacher assistant. Most of all of us have two or three jobs and we shouldn't have to have that. And I, I just beg of you to, to help, help us and to make sure that we are going to be able to succeed and give back to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, next individual is Alicia Hillier. Again, and again, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Alicia Hillier and I live at 1477 Farm Life School Road in Carthage. I wrote it all down, so I'm just going to start there, but this is pretty personal because that's pretty much the only thing I know how to speak on that I know is 100% verbatim. So I'd like to begin with my appreciation for having a platform for not only myself, but others to speak on matters that we feel not only affect us, but also the ones around us, as I do believe that advocacy done in its truest form is the beginning of change for people who may feel they cannot advocate for themselves. With that being said, I'm here to advocate for myself and for approximately 641 other classified staff members in Lee County Schools. I want to jump right into a few personal things as it really does shine light now on how much of an impact Lee County Schools has had on my life from such a young age. I did not start out in Lee County Schools, but by the time I was in second grade, I was a new student in BT Bullock, the third school I had attended at that point. I showed up with characteristics from my household that made it complicated for a child to adjust. As time went on, my obnoxiousness turned into outgoing. My once loud and annoying voice was talked about as the ability to project and enunciate, and I was no longer a crybaby, but now an empath. Megan O'Shaughnessy did more than her job with me in guiding me emotionally as a counselor at BT Bullock and being able to work alongside her as an adult is more than a privilege for me, but an honor. Around this time period, there was a verbal altercation in my home. This led to my sister, only 10 years old at the time, to dangerously get herself out of this situation and ended up almost a mile up the road. As no adult in my house made efforts to calm this, my bus driver at the time not only got us onto the bus, but was also able to safely convince my sister to join us and took us with her. To you, she was doing her job. We were just kids on her route, but to us, she was our calm in that moment. She would also be considered classified staff. I started high school at Southernly and for any child, this is a transition that only gets easier with time, as to be expected. What I did not expect was to be found in the restroom by my math teacher in true teenage girl fashion, crying uncontrollably in a bathroom stall. The reason irrelevant to me at this point in my life, but also irrelevant to her in that moment. The reason I was not in class was unimportant and the urge to reprimand me was not in her nature. Instead, she held me and guided me emotionally to a place I needed to be. I do not recall anyone before that holding me as I cried. Six years later, this same educator, Diana Kegel, who is now on her 20th year of education, held me while I cried at my son's funeral. Halfway through my 11th grade year, you guessed it, we moved again. I was now going to Lee Senior. With lack of parent involvement, finding something to be a part of that didn't require any transportation, any funds or any signatures at that matter, were slim to none. Instead, I would wait until my days were over and walk to a church a few blocks up the road from the current address at the time. I had the pleasure of meeting the one and only Ms. Monroe. She had no idea who I was or where I came from, but she made sure that I was aware that I was the only one in charge of where I would be going. I have now been lucky to work alongside Ms. Monroe for almost three years. She has never failed to not hold me accountable for my peace, my life, and continues to push herself and students to be their best self and there is no shame in moving slower than the rest as long as you are moving. And she means this not only physically, but mentally. As I go into year three, Ms. Monroe is now going into year 27. She has served in more ways than one in her classified position and her and I have had the same wage. I will never understand how we could say on any level that this is not only unfair, but disheartening to someone in my position as this shows that no matter how much determination and consistency you have, the opportunity to move forward here is not there. I do not want to move on from this subject without also mentioning that I have found more in Lee County Schools than I can express. When I got to my position at Tramley Elementary School, the first TA I had the pleasure of meeting was Ms. Wumble. I have since been able to form more than a close relationship with her and if you haven't heard me say that name before, you've probably heard me refer to her as mom because until I met her, this word was no longer in my vocabulary. Lee County Schools has never failed me, as you can assume. The educators of Lee County are something to be proud of. With this being said, let me quickly go into the facts of being a classified staff member with Lee County Schools. I've combined all of my paychecks after tax from April through October. During the six months period, I went one month with no income at all from Lee County Schools and another with very minimal. This combined number was $9,419. I can only assume that I'm expected to tuck away a portion of this to cover the inconsistencies in my paychecks. I took this number and divided it by those six months and it gave me an average of 15.06 and 69 cent per month for the six month period. I started off with the most obvious bills that any adult would have to pay. An average one-bedroom apartment in Lee County is $1,286. This now leaves me with $238. I went on to include the average car note, water bill, electric bill, phone bill and basic internet. I also added on very minimal necessities. These included one bottle of shampoo, one bottle of conditioner, one pack of razors, one bottle of body wash, one container of laundry soap, one thing of dish soap and a single stick of deodorant at the lowest cost. There were not any averages of these items, so at my local Walmart website and found the cheapest things that I could find. I also made a basic meal plan. This included one gallon of milk, one pound of butter, one pack of the cheapest lunch menu you could find, bologna to be exact, and the lowest cost of cheese, one pack of chicken and a dozen eggs. This came out to $161 a month. Given a four-week month and $202.10 for a five-week month. Keep in mind, I only had $238 after my rent. No other bills, just the rent. To keep this as low as possible and not seem like I'm trying to exaggerate the cost of living, this was the only money that I'd added for meals, nothing more, nothing less. When combining all of these basic bills that I had listed above, as well as the bare minimum, minimum means and hygiene products and deducted it from my 100% accurate income, I now have negative $939.80. In case you were wondering how we got here, I was negative after the average car payment. In another attempt to show that this is almost impossible, I took every bill mentioned above and I halved that average. For example, the average rent is now not 12.68, but is 6.34. I did this for every one of the bills I had mentioned and this only left me with $242.76. Some of the things that I did not add in this scenario that are extremely realistic would include gas, car maintenance, doctor visits, copays and medications, toothpaste, face, face wash, makeup, toilet paper, paper towels, feminine products, unexpected food spills, spoils due to personal negligence or weather. I did my best only to include what was needed to get by and nothing more. This is also based off a one-person income with the assumption that they would only be taking care of themselves. Please let us not forget that there are classified staff who are single parents to one or more than one child and there were no child expenses deducted from this. As a lot of us may have a second income, whether it comes from a partner, a roommate, or even a second job, surviving should not be a shared responsibility. As a Lee County employee, there is no reason that we work a full-time job and cannot meet half of what's required to maintain a place to stay or the expenses that come with it. The Lee County School System had never failed me until I began to work for the Lee County School System. At this point, a bonus is unacceptable and an increase in salary is what, what is needed and what we deserve. As we understand a long-term solution will always be more rewarding than a temporary fix. As it seems the question of whose responsibility it is to make these decisions and the blame is shifted back and forth constantly, I could say with pure confidence that we are all responsible for our homes, our families and our way of life. And as time goes on, it will be more than clear that working for Lee County Schools under this pay rate and under no pay scale is an irresponsible financial decision as educators. And as educators, we will always take responsibility for our actions as this is what I have been taught by every single educator I have came in contact with. They say it only takes a little faith to move a mountain and there is way more than a little faith in this room today. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily York?
Emily York, 315 North Steel Street, Sanford, North Carolina, 27330. County Commissioners, as you have noticed tonight, you have, you are joined by a larger audience than usual. Tonight, you are joined by your constituents. There are Lee County Schools staff here. There are parents of children who attend Lee County Schools. There are community members and those who attend Lee County Schools themselves. As your constituents, we are all asking for the same thing. We are asking that you fulfill your financial responsibility to the Lee County Public School System as required by the NC General Statute 115 C-426. It is North Carolina law that local school administrative units use a standard budget format that draws funding from three sources. The state public school fund, obviously funded by the state, the local current expense fund, funded locally by the county, and the capital outlay fund, also funded locally by the county. The wages and salary of Lee County Schools staff, our bus drivers, our cafeteria staff, our TAs, our mechanics, our data managers, our office personnel, maintenance staff, these workers are where the current expenses, expense funds should go. And when you refuse to adequately and sufficiently pay into the current expense fund and pay our coworkers appropriately, you are minimizing their worth. By not ensuring that they are paid adequately, you are saying you do not value what our coworkers do in our buildings every day and what they do for our kids. And I've asked, what do you do? They transport, persevere, nurture, love, counsel, support, sympathize, guide and empower our students. So many of us have had people who have left Lee County Schools to go to neighboring towns saying, come, join us. They'll pay you what you're worth. And it tugs at our heartstrings because we have reasons why we want to stay, but financially, some of us can't. And you're going to lose people if you do not address this issue. If you do not make Lee County Schools and the salaries a priority, you can build as many apartment complexes as you want, but there will not be families to live in them because schools are important. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person is Kayla Wibaldah. Did I get that right?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kayla Wibaldah. I live at 995 Wind Race Trail. I originally signed up just in case we had to work our way through a list of people to get our coworkers' words across. So I will be short and sweet. I come to you tonight as a Lee County Schools employee. I am a classroom educator, but most importantly, as a community member and a parent of two beautiful, brilliant, bright Lee County Schools students. My children attend Greenwood Elementary and they love it there. And they do not just love it there because of their teacher and they do not just love it there because of their principal, but they love their bus driver, Ms. Howell. And my daughter loves her instructional assistant, Ms. Dalrymple. And they love their custodians and they love the cafeteria staff. And they love every person that works in that building. And I love every person that works in that building because they take care of my children. And I believe that all of my coworkers across Lee County Schools deserve a fair wage and a living wage. And I believe that if the county commissioners had funded or would commit to funding the budget as requested by the Board of Education in Lee County, that my coworkers could then earn a fair and livable wage as outlined by the classified pay step schedule that was in the budget presented last year. It is your responsibility to adequately fund our schools. The state is responsible, yes, but our county is responsible to locally fund as well. And if you had funded the original $5 million request instead of the 2.3 million dollars in part, then there would be a classified pay scale and we would not be here reminding you of your responsibility to your Lee County Schools employees and your Lee County constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Wumble?
Good evening. My name is Yolanda Wumble. And that was my daughter Alicia that just spoke. And I'm proud to say that she is my daughter. I am here, oh, my address, 3934 Cotton Road. So now, I'm speaking on behalf of not just bus drivers. I'm also a TA. And whenever we first began looking at the duties that we have as TA. As TAs, we have teachable moments with a lot of your children. We teach life skills to a lot of your children. We teach manners to a lot of your children. We teach boundaries as bus drivers because those- because those padded seats, for instance, on an elementary school bus, we can hold 72 children. So you look at this group, and you figure out 72 children between both of these rows. We have to drive, keep an eye on the mirror with the children behind us, keep an eye on the traffic, and not just that. Whenever we stop, we have to count our children, make sure it's safe for them to cross over, count them as they go across, count them when they get on the bus, make sure they sit in the right seat, and not only that, we have to make sure that the cars will stop so our children won't get killed and they won't get hurt. So as a bus driver, it is insulting to find out that there are teachers that are getting paid $35 an hour. That is insulting, because we all went to the same class. We all took the same test. We all passed the same test. And we all spent money out of our pockets to make sure Lee County had the best drivers in the county. That's not okay. Now, as a teacher's assistant, we grade papers, we white noses, we catch colds that we didn't go to school with. We catch COVID that we never thought we would have to get again. Not only that, we teach our children to not talk with all of their lunch in their mouths. We teach our children at lunchtime to sit down, don't stand on the table. And then when we ask some of these children, "Do you do this at home?", some of them say yes. So we're also an extension to the parents. So now, I just saw in the Saturday paper a list of Lee County School employees. And this list shows over a million dollars getting paid to staff. I would love to know what they do. I would love to know. Some of them are principals. I get that. But let me back up just for a minute. When I started in Lee County Schools, I started at Broadway. We were told we had to have an associate's degree to continue with our job. Everybody behind me has an associate's degree, everybody. We went back to school to get our associate's degree. I got my paycheck expecting that that associate's degree would make a difference, and it did not. So then, while still working, I went back to school and I got my bachelor's degree. Now, some of these jobs that's listed on here, I honestly believe some of these jobs were created for these people. And guess what? When I went back to school to get my bachelor's degree, I had the same expectation that a job was going to be created for me. I got my bachelor's degree at 50 years old in a classroom with students half and a fourth of my age. And not only that, I got it in human development and family services. To be told, unless I teach, there is nothing Lee County Schools could do for me. I am very disappointed. So guess what? I got my check, the same kind of check Alicia just mentioned. Heartbroken. When my sons, when my kids work in fast food. My twins worked at Smithfield Chicken and Barbecue. They brought home more money than their mother did in a month. Two weeks, I could have been hitting my son up for a loan. But I didn't, because I want to teach him some values. So guess what? I went back to school. I'm in school as we speak, getting my master's degree, hoping that there is some way that somebody in Lee County will pay me close to what I'm worth. Now, we're not just talking about me. I'm talking about all of these people behind me. We want to be paid what we're worth. These people on this list are getting paid not what they're worth. They are not. We're speaking a million dollars of Lee County money. And I got to stand up here and beg to be able to buy myself a pair of shoes not at a consignment store? No. Now, I'm going to ask you some questions. I got four minutes, and I can do it in the four minutes. What are these people doing? What are their specific jobs besides principals? Now, I can speak about one principal, which is Robert Newby, because he went through the ranks just like I am. I can speak on him. But some of the other ones, I would love to know what they're doing. And then, why isn't our money being spent on people looking directly in the children's eyes? That's a question a teacher asked me to ask. Not only that, we've lost tutors. So guess what? Out of all of the things that I mentioned, I'm now a tutor. Yes, I'm now a tutor. Did I get a pay increase? No. Did I get a job? Did I get more added to my duties? Yes. And we're not even talking about lunch duty. Where the kids might stand on the table, they might throw food, they might get in a fight in between middle school and high school. And guess what we do? We tell them to use your words. Guess what? We're using our words. We're using our words. We're using our power, which is the same thing we tell our children. Use your words. They matter. Use your power. It's worth something. Use your voice. We're using our words. We're lifting our voice, because we matter. We really matter. Now, let me hear. Let me go back. I've already spoken about the million-dollar budget. How many children are these people personally touching every day? And I'm not just talking about Christmas, because Christmas and Thanksgiving, we all love each other. They come through the doors, Christmas and Thanksgiving, and they shake our hands and say Merry Christmas. I tell you what, shake my hand and put a check in it. Shake my hand and put some checks in it. That's what I want. I don't want to cut apples for a function for you to say you appreciate me. I want you to cut me some checks to tell me you appreciate me. I don't want to go to another chili bowl. I want you to give me a check that will allow me to make chili for my family. That's what I want. Subs, guess what? Substitutes make $25 an hour. Guess who trains the substitutes? We do, because some of them come in and don't know how to turn on a smartboard. They come in, and I have personally told every substitute that has walked through the door, "I will not let you drown." And I have not let them drown. I have called our children. Really, I have been the substitute without pay. We have been the substitutes without pay. Not just that, we're the intervention people, because now, there's no tutors in school. The budget won't allow for tutors. So guess who are the tutors are? We're the tutors without pay. We are. So, you know, again, we're the ones teaching these life lessons. We're the people that's making less than teenagers in fast food. And in my closing, every one of you, you have a copy of, oh, wait a minute, I'm not closing. The ESSA, I want you to make sure to know that I'm doing my homework, which stands for Every Student Succeeds Act. That was put in place in 2015. That has not been replaced. So if every student is going to succeed, guess who else has to succeed? We do. Now, in closing, and this is my real closing, at the bottom of those check stubs that you're going to look at, you're going to see these words. This is not a check, and it's not.
Thank you. Thank you. Next individual on the public comments is David Smoke. Again, please state your name and your address for the record.
Ten minutes or three minutes?
Ah, three.
Okay. As a point of order, I would challenge that, but I have already emailed my comments to all the commissioners for you to read at your leisure. Name is David Smoke, 96 Northridge Trail. Good evening, Commissioners, happy holidays, and as always, thank you for your service with the new year and only one new face joining you soon. I wanted to take a moment to prognosticate a little before the next year's budget discussions soon begin as a simple private citizen and your boss. As always, I know you will be bombarded with requests to spend more and more money, and I will still try to show up and ask you to keep your hands out of my bank account. The following points are based on my own amateur research on public websites. If I am incorrect or misunderstood this public information, then as always, I apologize, but always use it to highlight how complicated this mess is for anyone to understand. In full disclosure on this one topic, I and my children are all products of traditional public schools, but now we have all entered a new era of more school choices, and parents now have a choice of five education systems in Lee County. Remember that when you hear, "Please, spend more on the largest of those school systems so it can continue to dominate the other four systems." On the one hand, you will be told to fulfill your legal responsibilities regarding maintenance, while also being told you should spend more on the state's legal responsibilities such as salaries, and you're going to be called names for not doing it. I have mentioned before, using two tools to help with your managerial decisions, ABC is Activity Based Costing, which governments at every level hate reporting. How much does it cost to do one activity like educating a student? I know our own local budget has more money flowing to it than what is labeled under education. Just ask our own county financial analyst to report on the total and local taxpayer costs for education in the traditional schools, charter schools, and the state homeschool virtual academy, because they all take a piece of our 20-plus million annually. One local charter school can even afford an emblazoned administrator without coming to you for more funds, at least to my knowledge. How are charter schools paying for their non-teaching staff? If as reported in the media, all the funding for classified staff comes from you. I don't know. The other two of the five school systems are private schools and private homeschools, which you should also educate yourself on also, since more state vouchers are going to them and zero local funds, which is actually a bargain for us taxpayers as long as they perform at or exceed the public system's performance. Anyways, you and I both know that Lee County spends a lot more on education than the top-line number blasted across the media when you deny the huge increases asked from the Board of Education, which is soon to be entirely Republican staff, which I know also adds to the political drama that I luckily don't have to participate in. If you haven't heard, Cumberland County has stopped funding SROs, which is an interesting concept if you use cost, value, return on investment analyses, like Lean Six Sigma Tools, which I have also talked about in the past. Funding percentages arguments over the past few years have been distorted by federal COVID funds, as well as the voter-approved sports complex, which your own analysts can account for also before others try to throw them in your face again. I've heard that the Board of Education is exploring Lean Six Sigma programs, which can produce huge improvements in efficiency and quality, but is almost always torpedoed in government operations because it usually results in smaller government and less employees. I'll say again, the bravest thing the BOE did recently was to change their calendar, which the local media hyped as breaking the law, which allowed the fall semester to test before the Christmas break. A great idea that didn't cost taxpayers a dime and student test scores did improve. By continuing to demand fiscal discipline on county spending, you will allow the exploration of processes or staffing that will be more efficient and cheaper to us taxpayers, but may result in fewer employees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is under Old Business, Horton Park Improvements Parking Lot and Sidewalk Addition Bid and Contract Approval.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman. I would like to bring the Horton Park Improvement Project-
Brandon, Brandon, can you wait?
Yes.
Okay. Not interested in the park. Those are expenses. Dropped. Okay, sir.
All mine?
Please.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman. I'd like to bring the Horton Park Improvement Project Additional Parking Lot before you tonight, specifically requesting your approval and acceptance of the lowest responsive bid received by Lee County on this project. The project includes a base bid plus three alternates. A base bid is a drive-through parking lot with 17 additional spaces, additional sidewalk on the road front and around the playground, and retaining wall structure by the playground. Alternate one is ADA curbing and sidewalk connection at the main entrance. Alternate two, sidewalk construction down Washington Avenue for connection to the community garden. This includes retaining wall and hand railing over the creek drain. Also, Lee County has an agreement in place with the city of Sanford to take over maintenance of the new sidewalks once the project's completed. Alternate three is conduit insulation under the new parking lot, which will allow Duke Energy to install street lighting. This project will be funded by ARPA funds and general funds. Lee County received four bids on October 24, 2024, and they include bids from Compendium Contracting LLC, Sanford Contractors Incorporated, Bar Construction Company Incorporated, Carolina Commercial Contractors LLC. The lowest responsive bid and the contract recommendation by J. Thomas Engineering is Compendium Contracting LLC. A total cost of $470,401, which is the base plus all three alternates. The request tonight is for approval of the lowest bid to allow the project to move forward with contract execution between Lee County and Compendium Contracting LLC. I can take any questions.
Questions for Brandon. Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Vorbek?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
I've got one regarding the Washington Avenue sidewalks. Are you going to do both sides or just one side?
This is for both sides.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me clarify. It's one side, but it's both directions. So it's only on the park side.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
No, thank you.
Well, I'm glad you corrected that. Do I have a motion to approve the bid from Compendium Contracting? Motion's been made to approve the bid from Compendium Contracting LLC in the amount of $470,401 for the Horton Park Improvements, Parking Lot Sidewalk Addition, and authorize the chairman to sign the contract once approved by legal department. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving that along, new business. We are referring to the Lee County Classification carried over from the consent agenda.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for allowing us this time to explain this agenda item. So before you tonight is a request to approve the addition of the Mobility Manager to the Lee County Classification and Pay Plan. And just as a reminder, the Board of Commissioners approved the grant application on May 15 of 2023 and held a public hearing on September 18, 2023, as well as an additional public hearing on October 16 of 2023 to fund this Mobility Manager. And so this Mobility Manager will be working. The funding is coming from NCDOT, does fund 90% of the salaries and benefits for the Mobility Manager position, and the intention is to increase access specifically to the elderly and disabled. And so this Mobility Manager will be really working on providing more on-demand options for our COLTS transportation. Right now, we have, COLTS requires a two-day advance notice in order to seek a request for transportation. And so this more on-demand function is more aligned with increased mobility and increasing options for easy access to transportation. And so I do have Ms. Rogers here with me tonight. She is the expert when it comes to NCDOT grant funding, if you all have any questions in regards to the funding.
Good evening. I'm not sure if Ms. Knoll said it, but the 10% difference in the salary and wages will be coming from contract revenues from COLTS.
And one other thing, since Ms. Mentor mentioned it too, one thing that I failed to mention as well is we are projecting that the future revenues from increased on-demand services will fund this position moving forward.
Questions, Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Vorbek?
Yes, sir. So-
So what other counties currently have a mobility manager?
There are other counties in the state that have mobility managers, and whenever we have an application process open to us, we, which starts in April each year, so we have the option to apply. So what we did was we applied for FY25, and again, this is like back in 2023 that's referenced. So we saw the need with the elderly and disabled population growing in our area that we needed to have this specific position. So around the state there are, and we have them in neighboring counties such as in, what's the, yeah, we have Johnston Lee or Johnston, Johnston County, J.Cats is what they're called, and they have a mobility manager. And what this does is it helps find other options, be more efficient, and with this elderly and disabled population growing and just helping educate them better on the opportunities that they have for riding the COLT system. We are a rural transportation system and not an urban, so we have a different style of transportation than the bigger cities do.
Okay, thank you.
Rocky Mount, that was the other one I was trying to come to mind was Rocky Mount.
And do you know what their average salaries are?
I do not, but we can find out.
Okay.
What we did for this salary was we looked at what we have in the pay plan now, and our transportation coordinator, who is Tanya Sarat, she manages the operations for COLT, and this position is one grade below Ms. Sarat's position.
Okay, that was one of my questions. And so what is, do you know what her name was? I'm sorry.
Tanya Sarat is the transportation coordinator. She manages all the operations for COLT.
And what else is just COLT?
Yes.
So if...
And the mobility manager will be just under her.
So explain to me how those two will intertwine.
So Tanya will supervise the mobility manager. The mobility manager will be, have the opportunity to get out of the office and educate the public and find the sources that's needed for the continuing transportation.
Okay, so, but who is currently doing what you're asking?
It's a new position.
A new position, so you would move.
Yeah, we're going to post it and with hopes that you approve it to add to the pay plan. And going back to the application process, when we start out applying with NCDOT, the reason for the May fifteenth grant application is so that we can come before you and ask to apply, just generally apply. So then when we had the public hearing in September of 2023, we, that was for part of the funding, the part-time position, which Ms. Davidson holds now. And then we saw a need for the full-time position so that that person could get outside the office and do the education piece, the marketing piece, and come together with other resources in the community.
Would that lessen Tanya Sarat's role?
I'm sorry?
Would the current, the position you're wanting to put the mobility manager, would it lessen Tanya Sarat's role?
Not for operations, no, but what we're finding is Ms. Sarat does not have the opportunity to go out and meet and greet and bring these resources together.
And let me add too, that might help answer your question as well, and so what we're looking at truly is expanding services. And so that expansion, like right now, it is difficult because a lot of the population that uses COLT, it's often very hard to give a two-day notice to go somewhere. And so this, this position, we are, we are really venturing down, increase in mobility access as in not having that two-day window. And so in essence, increasing revenues as well as increasing demand services. And so this person will really be focusing on, one, getting, getting transportation to the elderly and disabled, how to market it, how to, how to get that transportation available to them, but also expanding services that we don't currently offer.
Okay. Just a few more, sorry. I was a little confused on the request of salary. So is our salary grade, when it's listed, is it already adding in the benefits?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so that was on the application, the salary request was fifty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars, and then twenty-five thousand six hundred and five dollars in benefits. But then based on the, I'm trying to figure out what the salary is for the full-time position. The part-time was way more easier to understand.
Yes, so if you look at the attachment of the Lee County Classification and Pay Plan and you go to the grade seventy.
Yes, ma'am.
You will see mobility manager listed, and the minimum starting salary for that position is fifty-eight thousand three thirteen. We do list the benefits separate and then add them together because when we ask for the, the grant application, we ask for salary and benefits, which includes FICA, 401K, retirement.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly. So a full-time position, working assuming forty hours plus, at fifty-eight thousand dollars, and a part-time position making fifty thousand dollars, and that's good.
So the part-time position is already filled and funded?
Agreed.
Correct.
But this is stating that the money that's going to be used is going to be covering the part-time and the full-time position, and then that the funds...
So, so this...
The potential projected funds is going to be able to cover...
I'm sorry, so this position, this request is only for the full-time mobility manager?
Okay. And only, so the projected funds that you're going to make off of COLT is only ever going to be covering the full-time position, never the part-time?
Tim.
It covers... The contract revenue will cover, and the increase in fares and contract revenue will cover the ten percent or more. So the part-time position as well as the full-time position are ninety percent reimbursed. So we're generating ten percent or better to help offset the cost.
But the part-time's not included?
Yes. Not, not in this request. The part-time is in the grant.
Okay.
We've already filled that position, and we're already requesting reimbursement for that. What we're asking for tonight is to add this position to the pay plan.
Okay.
The full-time position to the pay plan.
Assuming we didn't get a 2026 funding, it would then become on us to fund at the grade seventy.
Along with contract revenue and fares, the other revenue sources that we have.
Okay.
The position will be posted though that it is grant-funded.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes.
Which means when the grant runs out, potentially so is the job, correct?
Unless we have other revenues that can cover the position.
Yes, and that will be part of this person's duty is to help seek out any grant opportunities that can help assist with that cost.
Okay, it's the, is there any bit of the, okay, so I guess where I'm just a little confused on is the amount requested was for fifty thousand dollars in your application, and you're saying we're not going to use that fifty thousand dollars that you received to pay the part-time employee?
So this request is not for the part-time at all. It is only for the full-time. The part-time, the, the application was submitted for both, but we are only adding the full-time at this time, because the part-time has already been filled and has been filled.
And funded.
And funded, correct.
So part-time positions don't have to, are not on our pay plan? So this position had to come to you because it is a full-time position that needed to go on the pay plan? So you're correct that the application, as they've said, has stated both, included funding for both. You've already moved and proved a budget amendment to fund the part-time position. Now they're coming back with the rest of it and putting that position in our pay plan.
Okay, so how much money were you awarded? What I'm trying, the, what I'm trying to wrap my head around it is if you applied for the fifty thousand and you awarded the fifty thousand, but you don't need the fifty thousand, can you increase your bus driver the thirteen dollars an hour? Can you use the fifty thousand to increase there? So the fifty thousand just sits in a pot?
No, we'll be using that fifty thousand to pay the person in the part-time position.
All right, I'm not following.
So to answer your question, the application that's attached to your agenda item, we were awarded one hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine twelve for this, or I'm sorry, the federal amount was one ten, three hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The state amount was thirteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars, and then the local match, which is the ten percent, was expected at thirteen thousand, seven ninety-two. Now that application did include both the full-time and the part-time, but those are the only two costs associated with this grant application.
And so you, am I the only one that's not fully comprehending this? Just trying to figure out where fifty thousand dollars is going.
It's going to pay the part-time position, so the grant...
But that was already funded, correct?
No, it was funded through this grant.
So then it, so then my first question of, so the fifty thousand dollar part-time is included in this grant funding?
Yes, I think there was a misunderstanding in what you were asking, Commissioner Vorbek. They are referring to just what they're asking you for tonight, is what they were answering to. You've already approved the funding and the part-time funding. That portion of the grant has already been approved and allocated. Now they're coming back and asking you to put this position in the pay plan and to use the remainder of the funding that was requested for the, a full-time position and a part-time position.
Okay, so then moving forward, if you didn't get 2026 funds, both positions are gone?
Yes, unless they have other revenues to cover it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And we have applied in a...
I did see that, yeah, I did see that.
Commissioner Connect. Commissioner Carver.
Just want to make a quick comment. I've had some association with some of the older folks in the area, and I used to talk to Debbie Davidson about this issue, and it's, it's, it's a good thing that we're trying to make the transportation more accessible. I think the, this transportation we have right now, the people that are doing it, et cetera, are doing a good job, but it's just too hard for a lot of these people to figure out exactly how to use the system in a timely fashion.
And I'm not disagreeing, I think COLT, and there's definitely been people in the area who, who need that, and they need the less than forty-eight hour notice and things. So I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just trying to figure out where the conduit of where this, the funds is coming, and if it doesn't come in 2026, who's, who's signing the check?
I wasn't sensing that you were disagreeing with that. I was just saying that it's, it's really good that we can do this for the older folks. Anyway, thank you.
Any further questions? I just have one. This is incorporating the micro-transit as we're transitioning to that, and that is, if I'm mistaken, was that a three-year grant?
Three years.
I believe so.
Three-year grant.
Depending on when it begins, but it is a three-year grant.
And it hasn't begun yet?
No.
We're waiting on approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no problem. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the addition of mobility manager to the Lee County Classification and Pay Plan. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the managers' report, the August 2024 Sales and Tax Distribution, Candace
Good evening. The August 2024 Sales Tax Distribution Report is attached for your review. As a reminder, these reports do run three months behind. Our sales tax revenues are seven point three six percent ahead of the same period last fiscal year.
Christmas is coming. Any questions for Candace? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves?
No, you're right.
Commissioner Vorbek?
We're under forty days, it's terrifying, but no, no questions, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
None.
Thank you, and just hope they stay shopping.
I'll report on that in March or April.
Yes. And the Dollar Tree is now open in Broadway. And make, they'll make happy people in Broadway, trust me. Managers' report.
Yes, sir. On our ongoing projects, we have Lee County Athletic Park building construction. All five buildings have roofs installed, and work is now focused on interior work and exterior finishes. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing are being installed, and drywall installation has started. Field construction, the turf builder is now working on soccer slash multipurpose field construction. The diamond fields are installed and stabilized until site can be installed in the spring of 2025. Fencing and field borders, including backstops and batting cages, are being installed. Site construction, construction work is focusing on lighting installation for streets and walkways. Sidewalk grading and installation is in process. Erosion control ponds have been mostly removed with NC Department of, I'm sorry, NCDQ approval allowing for construction to continue access to the entire site, which includes grading of the remaining multipurpose fields. Playground delivery and installation is anticipated to occur in February of 2025. The final retaining wall has been installed at the lower end of the multipurpose field eight. Phase one and two parks projects, Kiwanis Children's Park, construction is complete, including all sidewalks for future connection to Kiwanis Family Park, shelter and playground for younger kids installed, along with bathroom renovations. As requested by the action taken by the board, if any change orders that are approved by me were reported to you following, at the next following meeting, I have approved two change orders for Kiwanis Children's Park. Change order one was in the amount of two thousand dollars for additional grading around the picnic shelter, and number two was nine thousand dollars for rock installed on south end of the park beside the sidewalk for erosion control. The part of grant is to be closed out by January 2025. Parks and Recreation is working with the Lee County Library to install a storywalk along the newly installed sidewalk throughout the park. OT Salon Park Accessibility Project, this project, as you know, includes the installation of sidewalk, parking improvements, pad service, and playground. The bid for construction was approved by the board at the October twenty-first, twenty-fourth meeting, and staff is currently working with Sanford Contractors on finalizing terms of the contract for approval. And that was included into your agenda. Library Building Project is the CMR project facilitated by Sanford for the construction of the new Lake County Library, and as you know, we'll be having our kickoff, our groundbreaking Friday at ten o'clock. Parking and shuttle service for the event will be available from the OT Salon Pool Parking Lot should weather impact this event. We have a rain date to December sixth, however, I think if I saw the weather forecast correctly, we are in good shape hopefully for Friday. Hopefully, we won't get too much rain on Wednesday, and if so, it'll dry out before we go on Friday. Historic Courthouse Renovation Project currently focused on the roof replacement with alternates for masonry repairs and stormwater management. Sorry, not read to you everything you've seen from the past. We really have had not many changes since that. Last update on that one, so I'm for you with all that. Horton Parking, Horton Park Parking Lot Improvements, as you know, you approved the bids tonight and the future contract, and the funding for that was explained to you. Community Services update, this, the Community Support Services Department has hired for the reentry coordinator position, is excited to welcome Nicola Callaway to the team. Ms. Callaway recently retired as the chief probation officer in Wake County and comes to Lee County with thirty years of experience. So we're, we're very excited to have somebody with a lot of experience come in on that. Upcoming events tomorrow, don't please remember our Thanksgiving luncheon with our department heads at twelve o'clock at the Stanley Park Nature Center. Hope that all of you can attend, or at least a few of you, if you can, it'd be great. Our county offices will be closed November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth for Thanksgiving holidays. We have a meeting at December second for the swearing-in and new board member, our new meeting, new board member, I'm sorry, I'll get it out right in a minute. Swearing-in ceremony will begin at eleven AM for our three commissioners that will be taking their oaths, and then we'll have our regular organizational meeting at twelve o'clock, and that is again at the McLean Center. Please remember that we've adjusted our schedule, we've taken the December twelfth and thirteenth dates for the board retreat and moved those to January ninth and tenth and January thirty-first. And then we'll have a meeting here on December sixteenth. That is pretty much what I had in the agenda. I do want to take a point to just clarify some things. There have been several comments made regarding our budget since it was adopted, and I just want to clarify a few things that I've seen. The main one is our fund balance and numbers. There was a statement made that I had proposed to put six point seven million dollars into fund balance. That is not correct. I had proposed, in the budget that you adopted, proposed using six point seven million dollars of our fund balance to balance our budget. So I just want to clarify that. And another thing is several people are looking... And another thing is several people are looking at our total revenues and comparing that to what we're giving the schools. That's a hard comparison to make because we have lots of other revenues that come in, including that number I just used for you, six point seven million dollars. That is a much higher fund balance appropriation than we have ever had in our budget. We also have revenues that come in from federal and state sources to fund particular programs, of which I and the county commissioners have no control over how those are used, except in those particular programs. So I wanted to clarify that. And then we have people who are wanting to look at a percentage of our budget going to the schools. Well, just like I told you, our revenues and our programs fluctuate from year to year. Therefore, anybody's percentage in our budget is going to fluctuate from year to year. It does not mean we're giving less funding to any organization, or that you are giving any less funding to any particular organization. With the schools, for years, we have always looked at our per pupil spending because that is an accurate number, and it's not dependent on anybody else and what's happening in their budgets. So we have, over the last ten years and more, consistently raised our per pupil spending. And, uh, so I just wanted to be able to make sure that our board members and the public understand a little bit more about our budget and answer the correct information that's out there. And, uh, so thank you for allowing me to say those things.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the manager? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves?
I, I don't have any questions for, but I'd like to commit her statement for the record. There's clearly, in my opinion, a strong misunderstanding about how the whole system is supposed to work. I have to admit, I was impressed by the way they stood up for themselves, and I don't blame them one bit. But you can't look at just one funding source and say, this is the problem. It's not that simple. And it's clear to me that both boards, along with our delegation, has to do a better job of helping people understand how this system works so that the blame game does not continue to be as strong as it seems to be right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Okay, thanks.
For the manager. Commissioner Carver?
None.
Okay, um, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Carver?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, um... It's an interesting experience being on this board. And, um... I think it's been an eye-opener to me. The responsibility that the, not only the board takes, but the, the staff also, and the job that they do for the citizens of the county is remarkable. Uh, it's been a pleasure for me to be, uh, cooperating with you all. And, um, I, I just really know that the people that have been elected are going to do a good job next year. And now that I'm going to be a citizen, I'll look at my, uh... I'll be a citizen, but no longer a commissioner. I'll be looking at my, uh, property taxes and maybe feeling better about paying. Anyway, thanks, I wish you Godspeed.
Commissioner Connect?
Hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving and, um... Look in all your future endeavors, I'm sure you got plenty more ahead of you. Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Yes, um, yes, Commissioner Carver, it's been a pleasure to serve with you for two years, and I can't believe how quickly it's gone. From sitting in your living room to having discussions and, and being on the board together. I think I want to take a moment to, and I know the group has left. And I could probably do this all night, and so I'm not going to, but I, just a few things I wanted to point out with Ms. Stone's speech. And I do agree with you, that was actually one of my notes, as I said, it's disheartening for how, for how much public information is out there and how much is misunderstood. And I do agree with you with that one. Um, and that's, um, I do believe, um, the classified staff is coming from, um, a point, and I'm so proud of them for, for coming up and standing up and, and speaking on behalf of themselves without fear of retaliation. And, um, I mean, because speaking up for yourself can always come with the fear that you may lose your job, you may, you may get Facebook-shamed, you may end up in, in the Herald or the rant. So there are, are consequences to coming up and standing for yourself. Um, but I'm, I'm very glad that they did and that they're making their voice known. Um, but with Ms. Stone, I know she had spoken about driving around and seeing cars in the police department. Do what?
Yeah, police cars.
In the police department. I don't know if she's meaning Sanford PD or the sheriffs. The sheriff is under us. Um, police department's under City of Sanford. The sheriff actually does not have enough vehicles for the current deputies he does have. They do not take vehicles home. We actually lose sheriff deputies to neighboring counties because they have enough vehicles. The beautiful new fire department on Colton Road is not ours, it is the City of Sanford. It is beautiful, I do agree with you. Um, the City of Sanford meets, um, on Tuesdays. I will gladly send information on city council meetings. Another one of the things she did, did discuss about was, um... Hmm, I lost that one. Ms. Womble, who had spoke on salaries and what was being presented. We do not have control over the salaries and the stuff that gets, how it gets spent. Ultimately, the county commissioner is a bank, and we provide money to the county school board. The school board then dictates how that money goes down, or their staff does. Uh, those were a few that stood out to me, um... That I wanted to at least address. There has been a few things that I have said that, one thing is bus licensing, I know that was spoken about. And I do think we are a county that, we're not that ju- huge, we're not that big. I think we could find a way to pay for the bus-driving school, or the fees, or whatever, upfront. If they fulfill a thirty-day contract, or whatever, we find a way to then take it out of their paycheck. But I think bus fees for getting licensing and stuff, is it, if that's four hundred dollars that they're waiting nine months to be reimbursed on, for me, that's my electric bill, that's my water bill, that's my gas bill, that's my phone bill. So if you're waiting nine months for that, one of those is probably getting shut off. That's a huge bill that we could be able to take off. And I do think there's, is there ways to make benefits more affordable? I, I do think there's some other things outside that we can support the classified staff, um, and teachers as well, that I would appreciate maybe school board looking into, if possible. But I appreciate your time, and I appreciate them coming up.
Commissioner Reeves?
Uh, first, I'd like to thank, uh, Mrs. Carver for allowing us to utilize your husband's talents over the past four years, and your being so patient and often at our meeting. Thank you for your service to the board as well. Commissioner Carver, thank you for all you've done, both in the military and Lee County. And try not to be too hard when you come up with your complaints about your tax rates and all that. Just remember, we used to be friends, so just be careful. Uh, the, the other parting thing on this, uh... Crowd that came out tonight. It, it technically and actually does my heart good to see people stand up for what they believe in, and I think they're doing the right thing. Perhaps not the right timing, or the best timing. But I have no reservation about whether it should have been done or not. It should have been here long before, and especially before the elections. Sometime it pays to know where your problems are before, not after. This board can only do so much. We need the cooperation of the school board to make certain things happen for the school board employees. We just can't automatically do it. And the state owes us, in my opinion, more than we currently receive. And if you never ask for your money, you should not expect to get it. Always ask for it. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I just want to thank Commissioner Carver for your service, and, uh, I hope whatever you decide to do with your spare time going forward, I hope you enjoy it. Thank you.
I'll make a comment. Commissioner Carver, thank you for your service. And Cricket, thank you for allowing him. Uh, I had to ask my wife, uh, when I was asked to run for reelection, and I had to look at the wife, and of course, she gave me the approval, so we, we, we appreciate your, um, co-commissioner status. As far as the issue that, and I failed to share it with everybody. I know I shared it with the manager and the school superintendent and the board chair of the Lee County Board of Education. But on Thursday and Friday, I attended the North Carolina Association of County Commissions Legislative Goals Conference. And by Friday, that Thursday afternoon, excuse me, I had to submit a goal proposal that the state support legislation promoting classified school personnel recruitment and retention funds. That it really falls on the state to take over the payments for these people. Now, I do understand it's complicated and it's not an issue. But on behalf of some of the comments that were made, and I just want to be clarif- to clarify. I approached the board a couple of weeks back, and we were discussing a relationship on a joint project that would benefit the taxpayers, keep our costs down, improve the school bus garage, and do a, another facility for the county. And when I was discussing that, someone made the comment, and I don't recall, but, uh, we as a board of commissioners cannot micromanage the school board because that's an elected body, and we're an elected body. So the micromanaging cannot be at our level. We can't go tell them how to, uh, conduct your pay plan, how to do your very rate increase for s- for the time you're, uh, serving the commission, the, the community. I just want to say, we do appreciate what you do. I'm not going to apologize for what previous boards failed to do when they were talking about school boards. But I do want you to know that we cannot compare ourselves to Wake County, Chatham County, or Moore County. Uh, we're Lee County. And that's just a, a fact of life. I did propose a legislative goal, and it got rewritten. We, we literally had a episode of How Sausage Is Made, uh, Friday morning. And the goal that we were unanimous in approving for the State Legislative Goals Conference is Public Education Goal Number Seven, Second Amendment, it was amended twice. Support legislation promoting teacher and classified school personnel recruitment and retention, including state funding for increased salaries. And that is the goal for the State Association of North Carolina County Commissions that we will be pushing with the legislature. Uh, because it's a fundamental responsibility of, of the state to pay the incomes as statute states for us. Wish to everyone that you have a wonderful Thanksgiving. If you're traveling, please drive safely, wear your seatbelts. If you're flying, just remember, be cautious, and don't make rude remarks at the airport.
Why are you bulletproof this?
Yeah, yes, unfortunately. That's insane. So, without further ado, we do have a closed session scheduled?
We're going to close session. Per General Statute one-four-three, three-one-eight, one-one-eight-three to consult with an attorney, our attorney to preserve attorney-client privilege. Per General Statute three-and-four-three, one-four-three, three-one-eight, one-one-eight-four to discuss matters relating to location and expansion of the business. Thank you.
Motion's been made to go into closed session. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session, thank you. Please take ten minutes. We can take ten minutes? Ten minutes, yeah.
We're going ten minutes.
We're going ten minutes.
You and I must make a pact. We must bring salvation back.
We're out of closed session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion been made to adjourn. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We're now adjourned. Please drive safely, wear your seatbelts, no speeding.